This is Bill McBride. This is Bill McBride. I'm acting Chair of the Review of Seventy-Five Monroe. The date is September fifteenth, and I'd like to open this meeting. This is a meeting for information only. We will not be making decisions. The applicant is responding to our last meeting where we asked that they give us an example of how they would address our style issues and concerns, and use the very first building as an example of that. So we're only going to be looking at style on one building, and we'll be looking at it from all directions. I am opening this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay.
How do you all vote?
Aye.
Yes.
Hey Maria, Maria, you should call the roll since we're on video.
Okay. I heard Member Pollock, aye. I heard, I think, Member Lanahan, aye.
Yeah.
And then we just had Member Maria.
Aye.
And Chairperson McBride. Perfect.
Yes, I'll ask this. Does anybody wish to recuse themselves for any reason from this meeting? I'll assume everybody is a no unless otherwise said yes. Okay, there's no recusals. So let's move this meeting forward. We all have copies of your presentation in front of us. It's very helpful. Thank you, and you would like to start this meeting by having your architects present the 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 proposal that's in front of us.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Even so, it's a Friday night. I'm happy that we can have a chance to show you everything that we have worked on to hopefully at the end have an understanding if that's the right way to approach and move forward. So first, I looked at the the special permit, the copy Chris shared with us. And I really looked, there was one section where it says the canal commercial concept proposes to and shall reflect the architectural massing materials proportion and site and size. So I think that's why we kind of brought some of these images back again. So we all remember and see these historic photographs from Erie Canal and Canal architecture, not just what has been done in Pittsburgh, but Lyons and Syracuse. And I mean, they're kind of similar, but yet slightly different. But overall, a lot of repetitive windows. And in the Lyons image, there's some imagery that you will see reflected also in some of our detailing on our elevations. So here is Sharon Place. Other two images actually of Sharon Place and other canal buildings. So then diving into into our elevations, we really took the images too hard and really trying to see how we can create a little bit more because we also know that your interest, even so, we saw right in the letter, it's written Sharon Place, but also look at the character of the village. So trying to clash or combine those architectural styles is not as straightforward as just building a 600-foot-long building with a repetitive window pattern. So I think, and as we explained before, the two-story and three-story building massing that we have along the area of the canal really will help us to also modulate a little bit more of the volume of what you find in the village, but yet have kind of more of a window pattern, an opening pattern that you might see on these larger industrial canal side buildings. So I think we're kind of mixing the ideas of having some smaller buildings, having the idea of a canal side development. And you can see here we have siding with different exposure. Here's a four-six inch exposure siding and eight-inch exposure siding. We're looking right now at different balconies, some maybe just bracketed because you could also see in some historical photographs where maybe certain roofs are just bracketed off. Some porches were developing some column details so that they maybe look a little bit more traditional. And then also at Trim Place, you see some roofs in other areas where it's just hung from up above that on a canal side setting, there are no posts that are kind of in the middle of unloading from the canal. Here, this dark area is just kind of showing, and I don't know if you can see it. We're showing that there's a little bit of brick, but we really are trying to bring a mixture in of materials. The colors will really be in the next round where we're showing you kind of with some real samples because these renderings are only so good. We can show you some of the colors that we're that we're thinking about. And here, I don't think last time there was an hour drawings. These balconies were fairly deep and big. We actually added yet another little one-story area for storage and another little study for an apartment. And the same kind of happens over here, and we just use different siding. And here in this, and then kind of here's what I alluded to earlier. It's actually a stair that is code required that brings you up to the roof, but really also will help us to create some of these other textural elements that we talked about. Here's kind of a walk or walk up down to the street. The site civil engineer is doing the grading plan right now so we can fine tune how big some of these steps will be to get up to to these terraces overlooking the road and the pedestrian area and then the canal. Here's a view from the railroad side. So we have these little shed roofs similar to what you find along Sharon Place and other canal side buildings where the roof is really just hung from up above. We have that detail here. Here is kind of this stair tower, and we're using different materials just again to to kind of mix things up a little bit and different window shapes. Here on these two sides, you can see these little one-story spaces that we added to the to the roof terrace area. And this outline typology is really from the air monitor, light monitor that you see on one of the buildings at Trim Place. And again, that it's not so repetitive on this side. On the south side of the building, we didn't do the monitors. We just added a different window. So this apartment unit, if that becomes kind of more vaulted ceiling, also will have a unique and different feature in it. So they're not all the same. And then here is kind of an overall view where you can see some of these textures and changes that we're developing now in more detail, the different exposures, brick, railings. So that's where we are right now. And I hand it over to Craig now so he can talk a little bit more about maybe some of the other pedestrian-oriented details and other things that we developed.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add because I think that's pretty complete. But you know, this three-dimensional illustration that you see here, like Dirk alluded to, you know, it doesn't truly reflect, you know, obviously, the landscape or any of the surrounding context. It's from our Revit model. So it gives you a pretty good understanding of the massing that we're proposing and how the buildings would, you know, kind of come together. But I think, you know, we'll eventually get to a more detailed rendering once we have all the landscape and grading and civil work figured out that can give you, I think, a much truer picture of of, you know, the feel of the of the environment that this building sits in or these buildings sit in. But I think, you know, it's still, I think, should help you along. And that combined with the elevations, hopefully, you know, is enough to make the kind of judgment that you need to make for now. I think that future civil work will be a companion piece to the future building development work that we would do on the successive buildings, you know, that march down the the canal. I think, you know, the other things that this the work we've done so far doesn't show are the other things that are going to add, I think, additional interest and variety to the site. So, you know, little pass-through connections between buildings that will have their own character or any kind of follies that we might build along the the canal along with boardwalks and pathways, the clubhouse that would exist over on the edge of the canal. There'll be a lot of other kind of appurtenances or other interesting pieces to the development that will be of a smaller scale, but will still add a lot of texture, especially at the pedestrian level, you know, as you're moving across the site along the canal, and you have these series of events on the building. You also have a series of other things happening that will add that layer of complexity. So as you as you judge this building, I think you got to think about it in terms of the final context, which I think will be, you know, much, much richer than what we're able to show you now. But but I think this does represent the the building well. And and I think one of the things that we've been talking about is that this type of commercial vernacular architecture that exists in the village along the canal and also, you know, other canal villages is really, you know, from eighteen fifty to nineteen twenty or the whole kind of period of significance for the canal, the style really didn't change very much because it was so utilitarian, so so basic. It's really mostly about the scale and proportions and massing and and individual elements, you know, like windows and things like that. But there aren't a lot of architectural details, you know. It's really pretty devoid of of, you know, the kind of architectural detail you'd find in the residential streets or even on Main Street. You know, from nineteen, from eighteen fifty to nineteen twenty, you'd go through a lot of different architectural styles, you know, from almost from Greek revival through Victorian to to like Mission. You know, all those styles were were evolving throughout that time. But the canal architecture, I don't think, was really changing very much. And I think that's the kind of beauty of of relating back to this canal commercial vernacular that we don't have to get into these debates of how debates about how how derivative to be in terms of, you know, picking up on styles that you see on Main Street or or on the residential streets. The the canal front didn't have that, which I think can make our work much more compatible, or it can make our job, I think, a little easier. I'm not suggesting this is an easy project to solve, but I still think the path to success is is there because the architecture on the canal was just that much more pared down, and we don't have to try and replicate things that we probably couldn't do a good job of replicating anyway. But beyond that, I think I don't have a lot to add to what Dirk's already presented. I do think that as we develop the additional buildings, you're likely to see this building evolve a little bit, especially, you know, in terms of, do we need this many colors on on this one building? Or, you know, as you add additional buildings, are there fewer colors per building so that the overall palette is kind of still represented on the site, but not as as frequently changing? But I think those are things that we're going to discover as we add to development. And we're already thinking about those things. But, you know, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves. We want to make sure we're on the same page with you, you know, at this point in time, which is why we're here. So unless Dirk, you think I'm missing something, I think that's all I've got.
No, I think we're really now here to see what your impressions are so we can react and answer any questions you might have and hopefully move forward in a streamlined fashion.
Okay, this is Bill McBride. I'll make a couple, some overall thoughts. I, this is an impressive first start on this, on style. I, you did a fine job. I have some questions for you. You you mentioned that as this evolves to the other buildings, we might not see the diversification of sections. And I and I, in terms of color or or building materials, I do think that diversification of sections is important. So I don't want to lose that. And I think that's, I think that's what you've captured here pretty well.
Yeah, I agree with that. I only say that because we've been thinking about it, and we're wondering if it will be, you know, too too much, too busy. But we're certainly not suggesting that we would back away from this. If this ends up being the most successful in terms of the frequency of changes of color or the number of times we should change color within a set of buildings, we're perfectly comfortable sticking to that. I mean, we've worked that out with with the board. So, you know, this we think is successful, and I guess we'll only know as we go on if if the cadence is right. But I think the massing, we wouldn't back away from the massing, I'm confident. And the number of color changes, maybe it's right, too. I'm perfectly happy to find that out and have that be the case.
Well, it's not, it's not just color that is that can diversify. It is the materials, you know. You some are wood, some are bricks, some are stones, some are white painted brick. So it's not just color. What I'm urging you to do is continue the diversification of sections, and it doesn't have to be just the the change of of color, you know. For example, Chris, you'll you'll recognize this. If you look at the building that's going up besides Whole Foods, you can see that they're they've changed. They have sections in that, and they, one section is is brick, and another section might be stone. So those kinds of things help diversify and pull down the look of a continuous mass. And I think you've done a good job on on that here. I just don't want you to lose that.
No, no, and and we certainly.
I think what what Greg was referring to. So a week ago, we started zooming out as as we developed this, and we kind of just brought the idea down, and it looked very busy. So we quickly found that we think we still had a lot have a lot of work to do to make this look intentional and not because if it's all repeats itself, then we kind of missed the point again. So we started looking, okay, what if we start extracting some colors or change with the material? So I think we we recognize that, and we just don't want you to think this here is kind of the pattern, and we just keep going because we all like it. There's a lot more work to do, and and we realized it as we zoomed out. So stay tuned for the next round of submissions when we start zooming out. If this is overall heading in the direction, that would be agreeable.
That's perfect. And I, you know, there are some other things in there that you've added that I think help the diversification. That is, you change the windows. I mean, you have a variety of, you have a variety of of porches. And one thing I really like in this, and that is that you've got that on both sides, you've got that veranda. Now, is that accessible from more than one apartment? On this?
No, up above, on top.
Oh, here?
The garden.
Yeah, let me go. This one actually will be, this apartment will have this part of the roof deck, and this apartment actually will have this part of the roof deck. So there will be a large planters to divide the space, and then everyone can have their own own space. And we're also looking right now, maybe the railing could even change a little bit if there maybe would be some other, if the deck would stop a little bit, and there's maybe some other planter conditions. But we're studying some of these other options. And maybe here, the railing continues, and in another location, it changes again just again to create this variety. So it's not just that one size, one solution fits all approach.
Right. Well, I really like that. So people could put a planter garden right there in those in the, yeah, that's that's really.
Yeah, they could, they could plant some vines, and they could grow up onto the pergola, you know, and you could have this kind of little little green rooftop, you know. It could be a really.
One could have stuff there, and then we have Westport honey.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. And then, of course, the next building, it changes, you know, and goes to a different location. So the variety of the, you know, kind of location of these rooftop amenity spaces changes from building to building. So it'll just, it'll just kind of, you know, be a constant not another place where we can create more variety, you know, where it's maybe not expected up up on these rooftops.
And it was interesting, a few weeks ago, we toured the building that we did with Mark Four along four ninety and looked out and to see how people are using the roof terraces that we're creating. And one person had one chair out there in a big roof terrace, and the other person had a jungle of vegetables out there. So it really depends on who the tenant is, and they really make it their own, which is great. That's exactly what the idea is behind it, that they can make it their own.
Well, also, what I liked about that, too, is that it, I was a little worried that we were chasing Shay and Place style too aggressively at the expense of the the other styles in the village, like the homes, like the Main Street. And I think that that veranda, that porch, whatever you call it, is a nice reflection of of Pittsburgh houses and homes.
Yeah.
So I, it's a nice idea. Question for you. You've got some some towers up above, some. I like what you've done with the roof lines. You vary them. Those, now, you're not putting apartments in those fourth floors up there, are you?
No, no, sorry. This one really needs to come up because, so we have roof access to the roof with one stair, and this one also needs to be taller. This is actually also where our elevator is in, but it doesn't need to be as tall as this one. So it naturally with its functions gave us the opportunity to also highlight the different functions a little bit and make them look different.
Yeah.
Yeah, but but no, no occupied, no occupied space above the third floor. The third floor is the end. It's all just.
And in here, we're really thinking that some of these areas will get cathedral ceilings as well as in here where we have this this window just to make some of these units a little bit more different, unique with a roof terrace compared to others that have more of a flat ceiling to really benefit from actually the volume we're creating and not just putting a flat ceiling in.
Yeah.
But, you know, even though I think the gables, the gable roofs are very successful, you know, there's the scale of them, I think, is also successful because they're not these big gables, you know. They're really much more in scale with what you see in the rest of the village, you know. They're not that tall, you know, even though we have room for a cathedral ceiling. It's it's not a monster gable that's going to dominate the landscape.
Yes. Yeah, I agree. Board members, how do you feel about what we're looking at? As sort of an initial model.
I can go. You'd like, yeah.
If you don't mind, I'm going to express my opinions because I think I only have a few more minutes to be present for the meeting. But in in general, I wanted to say, I think the stylistically, it's successful. You're moving definitely in the right direction. And I like how the style is relating to the canal vernacular and the individual elements and materials, but still keeping the scale of the buildings within the buildings reminiscent of the Main Street arrangement of things. And I I agree with the 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 lack of details that we would find in the typical residential homes because I think that that would not be appropriate. So I like that you've left out any additions of little bits of details like we have on our variety of residences around the village. Yeah, so that's, I mean, I guess just general approval from from my perspective.
Thank you.
Hey, Bill. Bill, this is Jeff. This Bill is Jeff Turner. If Christina has to leave, maybe we ought to do that motion moving the coastal assessment forum along to the planning board.
Oh, okay. All right. Let's let's do. Would you make that proposal, Jeff?
Yeah, we've got a coastal assessment forum, which is required by the local waterfront consistency portion of our village code. And we're required to move that along to the planning board as part of this process. It's an administrative process. I mean, that's an administrative thing. We're not stepping into the planning board shoes in any way by doing, sending that along. It's just a required action by this board. So I would suggest a motion referring that form to the board, to the plane board.
I would second that motion.
No, no, Bill, I can't move it. That was my suggestion.
Oh, I thought, okay, I make a motion then to send that forward as as Jeff described. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Member Maria. Yes. Member Lanahan?
Yes.
Member Pollock?
Yes.
And Member McBride?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Motion carried. Good, okay.
And before I interrupt you, I think Mr. Pollock was going to comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in on all this. I really, I thought this is a substantial improvement, and I like the facade setbacks at various depths. And I like seeing the porches there. There's only one thing that sort of interests me a little bit on this. If we are all black in this trim for both windows and balcony detail, I'd really like to see a global command, if you could do that in software, to see what that would be like in white. Because if you look at the Pittsburgh flower mill image that we had in the beginning, all those windows are white. It renders a more residential feeling than industrial feeling. That's, you know, that's my my comment on that. It would be interesting to see the differences between those two.
Yeah, I agree with that. We'd be happy to try that. And we should give some more thought to to that and how we're going to treat the colors on on the actual sash.
In here, yeah. I mean, we we started looking at the the window trim and the soldier courses. And so I think we're still, so that's the next level we're working down. But I agree, these windows in our mind aren't really black. I think they're white.
Yeah, it is. I think you're right. And and, you know, even though it should be minimal and it should be understated, I think there's still room for some variation and and some exploration on that issue. It's really, that's what these buildings are about.
Any other comments, Maria? Do you have any?
Yes, I do. So about did, did everybody finish? Did Jeffrey, did you finish with your comments?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, so I, you know, in response to the massing and the the idea that you are not using little decorations to mimic or try to respond to the architecture of the village, I agree with the rest of the board. So I think there are the 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 commentary that we had at the beginning, the first meeting was about massing, reflecting kind of the idea of that Main Street feeling. And I understand that you bring some of the. And I understand that, uh, you bring some of the elements of the area canal industrial piece. Uh, so, uh, so do I have two languages kind of, uh, opposing or, uh, you know. They're completely different languages if we think about it. So. I think that the most important piece is how do we bring to this industrial feeling? The pedestrian or the person, the people that will be walking, uh, by that first floor. To give a feeling of, of scale, uh, that is human scale, not the super industrial scale. Um, so one of the things I noticed, I suggest, and I want you to consider is that. This idea that most of the buildings in the area canal, they have kind of the first floor. Uh, the fi- the first floor is defined sometimes, uh, very, uh. With some, uh. You know, there's the difference in, uh, material sometimes or. Uh, or because of the part of the foundation, some of them have columns or, uh, things to define the first floor. There is the middle piece, which is the development. And at the end, there is kind of the, the last floor has kind of these. Not all of them, as you see in the, the, the bottom, um. Picture there, the third floor, the last floor, the fourth, one, two, three, you know, it has kind of a different, uh, material. So it's kind of that three-part type kind of idea is, you know, actually. I, I'm not, don't mean to bring the history of architecture here, but it's original from the Renaissance period that it comes, those big blocks. And it turns very too much of the vernacular just to give interest to the buildings. And we see that in the area canal. First floor, a little bit different, the development, and then the third floor. They, uh, the flower mill is just very simple. So I think that. You may bring interest thinking about that first floor development and just, uh, the end. Um, that's kind of a suggestion. The pergola on that, even though it may be fun, I still having. A little bit difficulty with that. I don't know, uh. It looks pretty modern to me. Uh, but, uh. That's something probably to explore, so. But the rest, I think that, uh, in terms of managing the massing is pretty interesting. You know, something that I, I personally value. Is how you bring this little short. Well-defined little towers. You see, there you go. But then the little light tiny one on the side, those things are pretty cool. Yeah, because there's a lot of kind of bringing, you know, kind of the idea that's, that, you know, a lot of things were happening, uh. Naturally, or, uh, as a result of, uh. Uh, a different ownership of the lands or things like that. So I think that's, that's kind of interesting and fun to, to see in the facade. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, to that, can I add this? What, what we're, what we're not seeing here, what we're missing that. That may a little bit address Maria's concern. Just. We're, we're not seeing the sidewalk along the front of. Of the buildings. That show. That these are not. Quite as stark and cold. Uh, as entrances as they might appear to be without a sidewalk. Is your.
Right along here, yes.
Both, both sides, actually, yeah, both sides.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. I mean. We're definitely very sensitive to the idea that this has to be a. Pedestrian oriented development. And that the success of this project is all about, you know, walking along the canal and feeling like this is a real place that. You know, it has authenticity. So as we get this civil work, you know, up to speed. We're definitely going to be very cognizant of how these, uh, units on the lowest floor. Tying to those sidewalks, how the landscaping and additional stoops and, uh, you know, little. Terrace or porch areas relate. And kind of create that streetscape or that, you know, walking path. Um. You know, I, I, I think there is probably opportunity to do something different on the ground floor on occasion. Um, we don't want to. Compete too much with the, the rhythm that's, you know, going from building to building. But there's probably a way to do a little bit of both and certainly. I, I mean, I totally agree that, you know, the success is all about. You know, from, from the, the next step is really to figure out. How we can make. That pedestrian experience, you know, really, really sing because, um, you know. I think we have all the elements here to do it. Except the civil work and once we, once we fold that in, I think these other things are going to come together. Um. But I appreciate your comments.
I, you know, Craig, I agree with you, like having all these base, like the first floor different for every building. No, I, I think that the simplicity. Of, uh. Of, for example, of the ones that have, uh, the carriage stories and the little, or I think that, that, that work. That proportion there looks, uh, well done.
Well, I agree with you that, you know, as an exception, you know, using it as a, another way to create a unique condition. Just like you see on these historic examples, I, I think makes sense and I think we can look for that.
Be- because, you know, when I, when I, I have been looking, you know. Uh, this is, uh, as we, we talk about how challenging this project is because of. Trying to bring character to a modern type of construction and the proportions. That, uh, modern construction just impose on the mass and scale. So, um. And how to not make it look like Goodman Street, uh, Rochester. I think that that try, uh, three-part type concept in some of those will allow that to, uh. Combined with the simplicity of those, the gray, uh, buildings and that proportion may. May, may break it for the pro- you know, may, may do it for the project.
Understood.
Yep. And if the two materials in the facade, if there's a base of one material and upper. Is, uh, the siding. If that happens one or twice, it just re- creates this. Quirkiness again and a kind of developed over time. Um, if it happens too many times, then it looks too planned again. So I think that's the challenge right now. When, when, when to subtract and when to add a little bit without it. Looking forced. Yeah.
All right, you know, not to, you know, I guess that for the, the, the renderings as it's kind of a play game of, of visual. You know, is, um, um, am I right? Like you will just try, it's almost an error. Figuring out which one are the pieces to accent and which ones not, not to accent.
Yeah, exactly right. And, and just as when we add buildings, you know. When we add additional buildings that maybe give us some more opportunities. Because now we've got a larger canvas to play with, so we can try something else. Um, again, not to, not to deviate from the, the big ideas, but just to look for more. Exceptions to the rules because the rules, you know, still want to be there. We just need to create more, uh, kind of idiosyncratic elements, you know, whether it's a different porch. Or like you say, a different base. Or whatever it might be. And, and frankly, you know, as the site falls away a little bit and you start to. There's a place where you're going to enter the parking at the lower level. And we're going to end up revealing more of the foundation. On one or two buildings, just in a, in a. In a segment of one or two buildings. So that's going to be another opportunity to say, hey, we've got a foundation here. How are we going to treat that? It's just another exception that we're going to have, I think that will, will add interest. Um, so I think there's, there's more to come. You know, in, in terms of the ability to create those, those variables, uh, as long as we get the right. You know, kind of palette or, or kind of. Standard, standard kit of parts, then we can look for those, those unique opportunities.
I'm wondering, and not to be picking things around, but I was wondering. You know, the parapets are really high. Sometimes, and if those railings. Instead of where the railings are, maybe the railings are not that. Tall, but the parapet becomes kind of part of the railing and have looked and eliminate the concept of the modern railing. It's, it's, I don't know. I just, just, I'm thinking out loud at this point.
You don't want to get, if you get the parapet too high, then when you sit down on your. On your terrace, you can't get a very good view. So for, for the person who's using the terrace. We'd probably like to keep the parapet a little lower and have a part of it be open railing, but there are opportunities. We could have like a little poke throughs with roof conductors, you know, that come down the building or you. There's, there's details that can still. Be introduced, I think, to make those. Parapets, you know, different in different locations.
And we want to make sure that. Quite often, if this top portion up above the window gets also too solid and heavy, it starts looking top heavy. So for example, on. This elevation here, I think. I think here this works because we have a window in here. But on this side, I'm even wondering if maybe some of these windows will get some transoms just to. Uh, take this top heaviness a little bit away. At least maybe on a few windows. So there's still more studies to come. Um, so. But I agree. We were thinking of some of these areas, if you maybe have planters sitting further back. You could actually bring in one area, could bring this down a little bit lower. Um, so there's. Like we said, there's still. Other parts and pieces that are coming, but. Uh, now it's really getting into the detail to the next level, but. Um, I appreciate.
And I think those, those additional opportunities that we might find. We're going to need them as we add buildings. You know, if this was the only building where we were going to build. We probably could say, well, we don't need. More variety than we've already developed, but we may need a little bit more as we, as we add buildings. And that's why. We may come back to this building and say, well, let's, let's do a little modification here so that it. Has a character that again makes it distinct from the next building, which. Might then do something else, even though they're all. Part of the same set, they, they need to have these. These little special character characteristics.
Any other comments by the board, uh, members? On anything? Well, let, let me just. Say this, I, I think. Chris, I think your architects, uh. Really understand the issues. And, and they're doing a great job. And, um. Uh, we, we seem to be communicating well between the board and, and the architects. Um. And I think, I think what you said is. The challenge is pulling this out to the other buildings without just. Being repetitious of what we've done here.
Exactly.
Um, and I, so I, I'm, I'm impressed with this first cut and, and what you've done. Um. Um, and I hope we've shared some ideas, uh, between us. Uh, and what I, I suggest is that. We now take this. To the rest of the site plan. To the, to the other buildings. Uh, based upon our conversations here. Uh, we, we, we're certainly. On the same page. Um. And, um. Um, we, we've thrown a pretty big challenge at your architects. To, to. Find diversity. That, that. Can be pulled out to other buildings without just being repetitious. Um. So that's, uh, what I propose we do is the next step on this. We can come back for information only. Which is what I'd suggest with all the other buildings or. The, um. You may choose to, uh, uh, have the, uh. Uh, voted on, um. Um. As an official, uh, approval or, or refinement.
You know. We are not in a position to vote at this point.
Not, not at this point. I know that. No, I'm saying, uh, uh, as we move forward.
Right, but there are other, we, we, we need a completed application. We've talked about this. So that. We are not yet positioned for a, a C of A. Uh, so. We are not in position. To vote. Until other. Events have come to pass.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, right. Yeah.
However, Bill, we, we, uh, listen, I appreciate all your time tonight. It's Friday. Everyone's tired. Uh, but your comments are very well taken. We agree with everything you're saying. Uh, I've already instructed the architects to move on, go to the next buildings. We're going to try to, uh, produce another set of drawings with the rest of the buildings in the next. I'm going to say two weeks. Uh, and we're going to make an application that's as complete as possible. Uh, aside from some other. Village processes that may need to happen. Um, and so my goal with the four of you is to get to a point where we're, we're. Not only on the same page, on the same word, and we're agreeing on where we are. Uh, we may have to go back and then come back, but I want to get to that point. Um. So I think. We're kind of on the same page with mass. We're kind of on the same page with. Uh, the site. Um. Configuration. And now what I'm hearing from you is that you understand and, uh. Are agreeing with our concept of the architectural style, which ties into. Uh, the canal commercial style and is also consistent with. Uh, you know, this, the, the village, uh, itself in, in, in many respects. And so we're going to proceed. We're going to put an application together. Again, I think we'll, we'll, we'll be ready in about two weeks. Um. While we're all together, you know me, I, I'd like to. Uh, see if we can pencil in a time to get back together, maybe the first week in November while we're all on the same. Page here. Is that possible?
Well, that, uh, uh, I, I do know that Christina had some. Problems, maybe in early November. Christina, are you still on the line? No, she had to leave.
Yeah, I think we lost her.
Um, I, I'm available. I don't know about the rest of them, but. I'm not sure about Christina. We'll have to check that.
I'm good.
And Maria?
Uh, I can find out, uh, the schedule, you know. We can make time, but the thing is, it's a moot point if Christina is not in, you know.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Well, I'll have to check with Christina.
We have to check with her really because what's. Yeah. Yeah, we can try. We did, we made this happen on a Friday, so I think, uh, the board is really ready to work when it's necessary.
Right.
That's great.
But wh- while we're all together. What if we pencil in November first as a target in pencil? And if it works fine, and if someone has to miss or if we, if we need to change it, we can change it, but. Can we shoot for that?
What day of the week is that?
It's a Monday, November first.
That's a Monday.
Mm hmm. Um, well, that's.
And we'll get the plans to you, you know, a few days before, hopefully a week before.
Yeah, that's, that, well, that's good with me, but we, we, uh, I'll check that out with Christina. Before we, uh, we'll lock that in.
Understood.
Is everyone else good for that date aside from Christina? There, we don't know.
Hello, uh, Maria, how about you?
Yeah, I can make it work.
Okay, and, uh, Jeff?
I'm good.
Okay, okay, then we'll just, I'll check with. Christina, uh, tomorrow and let you know.
Thank you so much for your time, everybody. Appreciate all your comments.
Great. Thank you, Chris.
Same here.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Okay, meeting, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Maria?
Yeah, I agree. Yep.
And Pollock, so. Meeting adjourned, uh, and McBride. Okay, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, Phil.
Bye bye.
Bye.